I see everyone is here tonight. Ms. Schaefer is not. Mr. Roten joins us, welcome. And it looks like everyone else that needs to be here is here. So are there any additions to the agenda? Alyssa, did you have something to put an extra on the agenda or was it...it's on there?
It's on there now.
It's on there?
We updated the agenda.
Ah, yes, okay.
It's just an extra appointment to the Budget Committee.
Okay. Are declarations of ex-party contact, conflict of interest, bias, et cetera? Okay. Presentations, comments from the public. Let's go with Ms. Steve. Kelly, would you...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you and good evening.
Lance, thank you.
I will start this off, thanks very much.
Well, Kelly was waving her arm around like she was gonna push the button, so I just...
She is. This is her presentation, but I wanted to first point out, "Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council tonight. Public Works Department brings before you a short presentation on the Pioneer Park Rehabilitation Project. This project started in 2013 and was recently deemed complete." While I just showed, joined the city late, early 2015, this project's been going on for a number of years. When I joined this, the city, the project was sorely underfunded and we were looking for funds. This young lady right here, Kelly Stevens, stepped up and went out and raised money for the Ford Family Foundation matching grant. I think it was like sixty-five or seventy thousand dollars. So in honor of that, I asked her to come tonight and present this. So with that, Kelly Stevens.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you. Do I gotta speak into this? Okay. So this project, I think from the beginning, was a large endeavor, like Lance said, you know, underfunded and things going on. And there's a lot of things that brought this project to life. We have, the main piece of the project was a new restroom facility that has concessions built into it.
Should we turn the lights off? What do you think?
Yeah, you might be able to see the photos better, actually.
I don't know.
And before I start, I want to thank Mr. Lewis. He's a Parks and Recreation Board member. He went out and took some very nice photos for me today to do the presentation. So thank you, Mr. Lewis. This is the entry plaza with a new restroom facility and a concessions area, and it is on the backside of the building. I'll show it to you later. We installed new light poles and a crosswalk that crosses over to the Neatling side of the park. As you can see here, all the planter beds, every planter bed that was placed in the entryway of the plaza, they're actually, you know, there's purposes for them, of course, vegetation, but storm water and, you know, heavy rains have been a big problem in the park, creating puddles and issues throughout the areas that people go in. So every single planter bed that has been built is actually its own like storm water facility, and the water goes into the planter bed and will percolate into the ground. So we're hoping to see less storm water, less puddles, less mud, hopefully, in the park. So that was the purpose of the whole entry plaza, has that in it, was engineered and designed for that, which is pretty neat. Here is a really nice view of the building. There's a big planter bed. The backside of the building, you can see here, those windows in the building, they open up and there's a door to enter in. Sooner or later, hopefully, we can rent this out to people who rent the park for events and such. So that, there's a new light pole right there. Bicycle racks were installed into the concrete in this gathering area here. And as you're, so there's, you can see them right in front of that big planter bed. This is actually a drop-off area, so you can actually pull in from Marion, take a little left, drop your children off, and then continue forward. That area that you see that we're facing the building right now, we did, the Parks and Recreation Board did a fundraiser, which was one of the fundraisers we did to raise funds for the Ford Family Grant. They paint, a lot of people from the community painted a tile, paid to paint a tile, and we had them fired and we've received them back. They're gonna be placed along that, the whole side of that wall.
Oh.
Let me do that while you...
Yeah. Thanks.
Push it there. Push the side, there's a button on the side.
All right, there we go. There we go.
Got it.
So right along there, that's where the tiles will go. We'll mount those against the restroom and it'll bring out some nice color to the facility.
Yeah, we thought it'd be kinda, a little adding some art in there is gonna be, is gonna look nice. And then also, I drove to Idaho and picked up these two rocks that were gifted to us. I'm sure everybody's, you know, saw the article. We're gonna place those in, maybe one over by the Jordan Bridge and then one in the entry plaza, and they're actually engraved Pioneer Park, which will add a nice little touch to the entry plaza. That's a great picture, huh? Thanks, Richard. I love this picture. So there's just a view of our new entryway and the colors of the building. Michael, he is an engineering technician in the Public Works Department. Him and I and Lance all together picked the colors of the building. We picked, you know, it is, it's blue. It's different than what's normally there, but I think it adds a little bit of light and a little bit of brightness when you enter the park. This right here is a large storm water swell that was constructed to percolate storm water into the ground. Sooner or later, a lot of people have come into the park in the Public Works Department and asked, "Why is there so much mud and hay? Why is there hay on the ground?" Well, the hay is actually protecting the seed that was put down. So sooner or later, that's all gonna be grass. It's really gonna be, it's gonna look really nice. And that's another storm water facility that was engineered into the plans.
This is the swell going down.
Right down. There. This is the natural play area. This was funded by a grant that we received from the Ferris Foundation for the natural play area. You can see there's boulders and sand for children to play in there. This was, we had wood benches that were constructed. A gentleman named Heston Forsen, he's a local Boy Scout. He came into the Public Works Department, asked, he needed a project he needed to complete. So we asked him to construct these beautiful benches that he plays throughout the park, which was neat because in our funding and in the budget for the park, benches are really important. You know, a parent wants to sit down and watch their child, but we just couldn't afford them. They're, you know, they can be up to like two thousand dollars apiece. So there were some of the things we had to cut back, but then we got these built for the park, which was wonderful. Here's another view of the natural play area. You can see there's another bench right there on the left. Mm-hmm. There's climbing logs, large boulders, and then at the other end, down there at the end, you can kinda hard to see them, but there's some balancing beams that were placed.
There.
And back there, yeah.
There.
There, you can kinda see them off to the right there. So that's neat. That's another, you know, it fits in really well with the, with the area because of the trees, because of the environment that we have in the park is pretty incredible. This is just another view of the entry plaza and the concrete and everything that was laid and the storm water. And then actually, you'll see it looks kinda bare with the vegetation, but there was a, there was a large portion of the budget that was on vegetation. So when all of these bloom and come to full life, it's really gonna be beautiful. There's kind of a front corner view of the swell on the left and planter beds in the front view. Those are the restrooms. Those are the doors you enter in. The middle door's actually the mechanical room. And then this is the Neatling side. This is the activity pavilion that we put in. And as you can see, we matched the roof color, the blue color. There was a concrete pad that was poured below it. We actually have two large wooden picnic tables that are, were constructed for under this pavilion, which will be nice. And there's gonna be ADA paved pathways to get to the pavilion, which is, we're working on this spring, you know, just, it's just all weather hindering. There's another view of the pavilion. It's kinda like double-tiered. We are going to be placing something special on the pavilion, which you guys will see at a later date. We're gonna be just paying a little bit of tribute to one of our big donors for the project. It's really gonna add a nice touch for the community and, you know, the togetherness of what we have here in Stateon. And that's it.
Okay.
Are there any questions from the council?
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Kelly, and kudos, kudos, kudos for all your work. It's a great, great job, and it's a beautiful facility. The snack bar on the back of the bathrooms, what kind of facilities are inside of there? I know you saw the windows, but is, are there stoves? Are there, what's inside of that building for the...
I'm gonna lay on some areas of that one.
There, it's all hard plumbed and wired for stoves and microwaves and so forth, but we did not have the funds to put anything like that in there. But it's ready to go. Once we come up with the funds to put that in there, it'll, we'll put those in there.
So that's a possible project, maybe for a civic group or something to actually...
That would be a wonderful project, yes.
Do that, okay.
I do wanna add to this. This project, again, we, when I started, we were really had problems with funding. We only had like four hundred thousand dollars to do a six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-dollar project. With Kelly's help, we came and the citizens of Stateon, they matched our funds, so we got up to seven hundred thousand dollars. This project was six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. We had a project cost, we had budgeted six-hundred-and-ninety thousand. The project cost six-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand. That's what the bid was to do this project. We had two bids. One was six-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty bucks. The other one was one point two million. We had two contractors bid on this. So obviously, we went with the six-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars. We got it built. I do, I feel pretty good about this, but, because we got it constructed for six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. It's less than a one percent contingency on this construction. I think if you talk to any contractor out there, any kind of project of this size, if you come in under budget or at budget or one percent, it was a job well done. And I'd like to just recognize the Public Works staff for making sure that came to fruition. Anyway, that's it.
Thank you, Lance, and Kelly.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Couple of questions, if I may.
Counselor?
Lance, did it displace the disc golf at all?
We will be moving one basket, hole number two, we're moving it forty-five feet to the west, but other than that, no.
So there's a event taking place at Neatling, people will still be able to play?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
My second question is, did you...
Well, let me point, they'll still have to watch out for discs, you know. I can't guarantee that. We have professional disc golfers out there, but yeah, for the most part, they should be able to.
The one season where we had the windstorm real bad and those trees came down, my recollection is an arborist told us that they were infected, and the trees surrounding it might be infected as well.
On the Doug Fur side, the south side?
Yeah.
I don't know anything about that, but I can look into it for you.
All right, thanks.
Imagine what this area must've looked like when the whole thing, as far as you could see, was that mature, climax, fir, forest, this whole area. Must've been something. Lots of wood to chop.
I do have one more question.
Go ahead.
The one section where the mud had accumulated in the water, that was, my understanding was the Salem, City of Salem water lines going through there. That was causing the issue.
You know, I talked to, I had a meeting with the City of Salem last week, and I spoke to them about that. There may be some small leaks in there. They can't find exact locations. And I've heard that, but in talking to Bob, our parks, he doesn't think that's what is coming from. It's just overland flow and we have clay out there and water tends to just sit on top of the ground, basically, and that's what we have.
Right. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the public. Reese Bourdoux, please.
I wrote that, so you could say it.
I could put more emphasis, Bour- Bourdoux, but it's, Reese is good. Thank you.
Thanks. Reese Bourdoux, five-two-five, Mill Stream Woods, Stateon, Oregon, neighbor. And I hope this is the time for this, but I guess I'm hoping that, well, first of all, I want to acknowledge that there's another empty chair over there. And then I want to ask if the city councilors got a copy of the city attorney's public statement, four pages, that was sent out to all the city employees, March third, 2016. Did you, Mayor, did you get this? The city councilors all got this four-page public statement? So I'm gonna assume I can talk about it since it's a public statement. Okay? January nineteenth, 2016, and I went back to listen to the whole tape a couple of times because I spoke at it, and I know that we were assured, we, I say the community, that there would be an objective inquiry with no control or oversight by city administration into Katinka, whose name I didn't say then, being put on unpaid administrative leave. She's since been released from her job, but there's a review pending, which will be this coming Friday at four-thirty. David spoke, Mr. Roten. Aiken Blitz was here and spoke. We were assured that Leah Liani Reeves would be doing an department, who had worked for the Department of Justice and now is with Aiken Blitz, would be doing this inquiry in private, would be interviewing people that had been put on a list and turned in by the person who isn't sitting there now tonight, Christine, who's been put on paid administrative leave now. We, I remember specifically and reviewed that both Councilor Gladwell and Quigley also asked questions about, would this be private? Would this protect the city employees? And everybody was assured that it would. So that was like six weeks ago, and I'm here to ask, why was a letter sent to all city employees with blunt and damaging anonymous personal statements casting aspersions on the two people who can't sit at that table anymore? I also want to know why, why they can't speak, why the public got a gag order about three months ago now in December, not, not public, excuse me, why anybody on any council or any employee of the city was told that they shouldn't be talking, shouldn't be discussing, and I'm not gonna read anything in this four pages, because I find it pathetic, appalling, disgusting, and very incriminating, after many, many people have not spoken directly. But I do know that many people say they have talked to some of you, expected it to be private, and even that wasn't. So I know the employed people can't talk. I'm expecting that the city councilors address this, and I don't know how this was even sent out. Furthermore, the four pages was signed and sent out by only Mr. David Roten, not, not Aiken Blitz, who sat there and assured us that people would have protection and privacy, not the Liani Reeves, who used to work for the governor's office and was now with them. Come on. Most of you have paid jobs. Most of these people have paid jobs, and I don't think anybody's able to say what they really think, feel, or concerned about, because this is already exposing two people who did talk. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, Reese. Mr. Roten, do you care to say anything in response to...
Sure. I was here when you spoke last time, and let me address that, actually, as the first one, from a protocol standpoint. As the council knows and the members of boards and commissions in Stateon know, they are decision-makers. And if you read that message carefully, what it was saying, said was, "Don't get into ex-party stuff when you are going to be a decision-maker on whatever the issue is discussed." And that's about the essence of that message. And I'm sorry if you interpreted that as some sort of a gag order. It was not at all. It's just that a concern and a caveat of public officials, whether an appointed official on a commission or elected officials on the council, if they're gonna be the decision-maker, the ultimate decision-maker, it's important that, that they are open-minded and if it comes to it, they would explain that they had spoken to various folks. And that was a caution along that line, as far as be careful as to where you are when there is a decision out there to be made down the way. That's the, that was the message intended. I'm sorry if there was another understanding or misunderstanding of that message. The statement that has been provided here is a statement that is made because there is still the same confidentiality involved, because this, this inquiry is an ongoing one. And Ms. Reeves has, over the course of this, continued to be asked to interview folks who are asking to be interviewed, and so it hasn't been a completed one. The text that you're reading in the statement that I provided is essentially Ms. Reeves' statements. I have not seen nor been made privy to the so-called draft of a report that ultimately will be provided to the council on a confidential basis, as promised at the initial outset. But in order that, that the council is informed and anyone else of interest is informed, it was a concern that particularly with the, the most recent event as far as the administrative leave of the finance director, it was important that the world knows at least the background up to this point where this inquiry goes as far as Ms. Reeves is concerned, with Aiken Blitz and Ms. Reeves together working this out. And so the, the statement was provided by the firm, and particularly from Ms. Reeves, as she even refers to, to the notes, and she does quote, but quotes anonymously, from the interviews that she's had up to this point. She actually asked if it was felt that she should be here tonight, and I said, "I didn't think that she should be here tonight," for the reason that her work is still going on. It should be protected as far as accusations, charges, and other tomatoes being thrown at her when she is actually operating in a, in a very quiet, very professional way in doing the job that the council asked her to do, asked both Aiken Blitz and her to accomplish. So that, that, long-winded, I'm sorry, the long-winded as it might be, that is a way of informing the council, the mayor, and anyone else who is of interest as to what the present state of the, of the situation is today, and particularly to shed some light on, on the situation with the finance director and the administrative leave, which is a very, very hard, difficult matter to wrestle with. But at this stage of the game, in an inquiry of this kind, it was imperative that, that happened. Thank you.
There we go. All right. Are there any other comments from the public at this time? There'll be a chance at the end of the meeting to speak. Come on up.
Hello, I was just here to get some information.
Name, name and, name and address, please.
Sam Hayes.
Okay.
Fifteen fifty West Brettport.
Okay, thank you.
It's about noise pollution in our backyards. The, the new business back there makes so much noise, we can't use our backyards anymore during the week. It's even noise over a lawnmower.
I'll bet.
Police chief has been over there and checked with us. We just want, what I wanna know is somebody give you a timeline to fix it, if...
Go ahead, Chief. I, I could comment on this too, but you first. Go ahead.
Yes, I've been, I've been working with Mr. Hay on the issue behind his house wall with our ordinance officer and with the dam. We've been looking into this. It is very noisy behind his house. We brought our sound decimal meter reading, reader over there and checked the levels. And I've been trying to get in touch with the business that's causing the issue of the noise, and I have not heard back from them as of yet.
Where, where, where is it coming from?
It's coming from one of the businesses along industrial, or the, or an industrial park along, on Wilco Road.
Oh, boy.
What type of business is it?
It's, it's the pallet company.
Oh, it's that wood chipper?
No, this is a fan.
It's a, it's a very large fan.
Large fan back there that just roars through, through mine and Jamie's yard, just roars through there.
So the...
It, it starts up about eight in the morning and goes till mid-afternoon, running at a very large or loud roar.
So it's not the, it's not the, the wood, the wood hog, the chipper?
No.
As they assured us...
You can just hear this fan just a roar through the yard, just...
Okay. Yeah, they, before they even started, they came to a meeting and assured us that that, that...
Well, when it first started, I went over there and asked them what they were gonna do about it. To be nice, just to say, well, they said, "Well, as soon as we get a contractor in..." Well, that was October, and there's nothing back there. And that's when I went down to City Hall and talked to them and stuff, and I just kinda wanna make sure people, everybody knew that we do have a real problem, because I cannot sell my house or my neighbor's house or any of us anymore, or if we wanted to, because nobody's gonna buy the house with that roar and going through there.
Okay. So Sam, you're, am I right, your property backs up against that industrial property?
And I even have a huge hedge, and it comes through that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So Rich, you said that you took your noise measure, what was it?
It was seventy.
And what is the...
Seventy, if you, if you look up what seventy is, it's the equivalent of a, of a loud vacuum cleaner, but you can hear that inside of his house. So it's, it's as if he has a loud vacuum cleaner running in his house all day long. So it is, it is very loud.
Keith, we understand that that facility is not, I don't wanna use the term up and running, but it's not complete yet.
That's correct. I mean, we're understanding, they're still working on getting things organized, but I, I sure would like to try to see what we can do to address the problem as soon as we can.
Yeah, we thought we had it under control before they even started. They said, "Oh, that, that wood hog, that chipper, isn't gonna make enough noise to create problems in the neighborhood." Okay, fine. No one said anything about...
This is like a big, big suction fan. They take all the sawdust and they blow it into trailers. But you see those two towers? It's right, you know, on the backside of that building. The fan's right in between both of those two towers.
Okay, okay.
And I'm straight in the back of it.
Unanticipated, yeah. Ma'am?
So when they said, "As soon as we get a contractor out there," are you saying that the reason that it's so loud is because there's something wrong with the fan, or is that really the average...
Soon as they could find a contractor, which, like I say, been three or four months now, to build a, a noise restriction thing for, or whatever.
Okay, so it's working appropriately. That's how loud it's going to be in order for them to maintain and do their business?
Yes.
Is that, so they're gonna try and kind of make some kind of a sound barrier so that you aren't as affected?
We hope. But it didn't, didn't, well, like I said, I was there, you know, in October. Said, "Well, as soon as we get a contractor." It's been a long time, and there's been, there's four or five contractors in this town that could've handled that job.
Okay.
Thank you.
Duly noted. Thank you, Sam. Anything else on that? Any...okay, let's go to the consent agenda for this evening. First item is February sixteenth, 2016, the City Council Minutes. Then OLCC Annual Renewals and Resolution Number Nine Forty-two, Budget Transfer. So let's do, let's do the City Council Minutes. Folks have a chance to look at those and...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would offer a motion to adopt the consent agenda altogether as presented unless there's a reason for someone to pull one of those items out.
Okay.
I would second that.
All right. I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda as, as offered. And there's, there is, I have one question. I asked, actually, I asked the chief earlier. I know this isn't supposed to be discussion, but Chief, there's no limit on how many alcohol dispensary locations a community can have, right?
Correct.
Okay, as many as we can stand?
Correct.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have one question too, about the transfer, just didn't know what amount that was.
For the- Should be in the resolution.
Thirty-one thousand, second page.
For the part?
I think, yeah, it is-
Oh, there's the last sentence, okay.
It is for the part, yeah.
I thought it was gonna be within the body.
Yeah. Okay. Thirty-one, five oh one, okay. That's it? Unusual to have questions on consent agenda, but we got a couple. Anything else, hearing nothing, all in favor on the, on that motion to adopt the consent agenda as offered, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, same sign? Okay, motion passes, let's go to the agenda. There are no public hearings, there's no unfinished business tonight, new business is award of contract for Western Avenue overlay project, Mr. Ludwig.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, before you tonight, we have the issue of awarding the Western Avenue overlay contract. We had five bidders for this project this year, which was good, we went out to bid a little earlier than last, so I think we got some pretty decent prices, so the issue before you is, shall the city award the bid to Knife River in the amount of $135,435 for the street overlay work on Western Avenue? Your options are, award the contract to the lowest responsible bidder, or reject all bids, and the Public Works Department recommends that you award the contract to Knife River. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, questions for Mr. Ludwig, on this?
Lance?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a history with Knife River doing projects?
Yes, they, yes, we have, I've only been here a year, but I've worked with them, with Knife River for a long time, when I was a private consultant, last year they did the Washington Street overlay as well, we have a pretty good reputa, they have a good reputation, and I'm happy to have them working here in the city.
Thanks.
Okay. What would you folks like to do? Ralph, what do you think of this one?
I think we should do it.
Okay.
Yes. Knife River.
I think that was a first and a second over there.
Yeah, well, so we, can I assume, I don't wanna assume too much, you're a-
That was a motion.
That was a motion, I seconded.
Okay, a motion to award the, the Western Avenue overlay project to Knife River, just Knife River Contractors, I guess, for number $135,435. Any discussion, please, I have a motion and a second. Anything? Alyssa, would you poll the council on this one, please?
Absolutely. Councilor Glidewell?
Aye.
Councilor Quigley?
Yes.
Councilor Niegel?
Yes.
Councilor Esselman?
Yes.
Councilor Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passes, five to zero.
Five to zero, thank you. Under staff and commission reports this evening, Rodiger belt filter press rehabilitation, Mr. Ludwig.
Well, sir, you have the memorandum that we prepared and added to the packet, what this is, is a, it's a belt filter press, this is a backup for our existing dryer and filter press for the wastewater treatment plant, in case, the, when the wastewater treatment plant project was done in 2012, they put in a dryer and a belt filter press, it's not the best, it's, it works, it works great, but it has a tendency to break down occasionally, we need something in place now, so if it does break down, we can continue processing. This project was supposed to take place several years ago, we finally went out to bid with it and got some, well, it wasn't even a bid, these are, these folks here, Charter Machine are the only folks that, that do this work anymore on this particular machine, so we got number, prices from them to rehabilitate the, the project, rehabilitate the belt press, it came under, came in under bid, $50,000 from what we previously had for it, so we gave this to them to rehabilitate, it should be starting work here any time, it's more of an informational thing for you folks, and I'll take any questions you have regarding this.
Lance, what, what financial impacts, what, what's the total number?
Two hundred and three thousand, we had two hundred and fifty thousand budgeted for that several years, for the last couple of years.
Okay.
They've come down in price with our negotiating with them, and just having a good working relation with them, and they came down forty-three thousand in the last six months to do this work, and I thought it was appropriate, we need to get something done, so if we break down, we have something to work with.
Okay. Questions or thoughts on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Brian?
Lance, this is not the initial supplier of this piece of equipment, is it?
No, it is not, they bought the rights to this, but they've been working with this for several years now, they've been maintaining these, this equipment for several years, we've used them in the past, they have a good, we have a good relationship with them, and that's why we went to them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor?
What kind of warranty or guarantee do you have on work when you pay $200,000 for someone doing work?
Generally speaking, for parts and labor, or parts for this, something like this, since it's a rehabilitation project, it comes with a 12-month guarantee for all parts and labor. That's what you can do, I mean, the machine's old, you know, they're rehabilitating it, they're putting all the new, used, all new parts in it, it should act and function as a new machine, but it's an old machine, so they will warranty the work that they do and all the parts they put in it for a year.
How much does a new machine cost?
I'd hate to guess, we didn't even look into that, we had, that's a, a long, drawn-out conversation that we could have regarding dryers and belt filter presses, they're, together they're well over a million dollars, the dryer that we put in there was 1.2 million, it doesn't function as advertised, and that is the reason we're having to do this. If we were to replace that dryer, we'd wanna replace it with something better than what's in there now, and that's gonna be in the, you know, 1.5, 2 million dollars, so, in order to, we can start saving money for that in the future, but we need a backup now, so if that breaks down, we have a way to process our sludge, and that's why we're doing this.
Lance, I don't know if this is gonna shed any light on this, as I understand it, that machine is very much like a Ford dryer machine, works in a paper mill, anyone's ever looked at a paper mill, the stuff comes down as a slurry-
Mm-hmm.
And as it moves, the water is separated out of it, and at the end, it goes on a roll, and we call it paper.
We add polymers to it to help coagulate the material before it gets to the actual-
But this is, on a smaller scale, this is basically a sludge-
Very similar.
Ford dryer machine, yeah. Okay. Does that help? Does anyone else but me understand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
More than I ever wanted to know about it.
It seems like we've spent millions and millions of dollars on that sewer plant, but it's an expensive plant to, to keep, it processes millions of gallons of fluid a day.
Well, you just have to think about what's going in there, it's toxic, you know, it just eats things away, and, you know, it just is what it is, everybody goes through the same, I took a trip to Wilsonville, they have the same exact system as ours, and they're going through the same exact issues that we have, and their plant is much bigger than ours, so it's much grander scale, they probably have, what, three times as many people as Stateon, everybody goes through it, unfortunately, it's just the nature of the beast, I'd say.
Probably the opportunity for some-
I'll leave that to you, Mr. Mayor.
I guess we won't. Okay, we need to award that contract.
No, I don't think you need to award that, it was, it's a maintenance, I just wanted to bring this before the council lets you know, as an informational.
Well, okay, that's even better, alright, thank you. Thanks, Lance, other presentations, comments from the public, anything right now? Business from the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor, I have nothing at this time.
Okay. Business from the mayor, what, what the council's acquiescence, is that a good term? I'm not sure. If you guys would be okay with it, and ladies also, Public Safety Commission appointment, Dave Valencia, he's a State Farm agent in the community, and also two budget committee members, Ted Humphries and Jennifer Godfrey, and if you folks would be okay with that, I would like to appoint them to those committees.
What committee or commission is Dave Valencia?
I'm sorry?
What, what, Public Safety, is that it?
Yeah, that's what it says.
Where?
On the agenda.
It doesn't say on the application.
It says on the agenda.
I guess there are applications there too, but- We could go back and read those.
Public Safety, Dave Valencia.
Yeah.
He left the bike, Mr. Mayor.
Application for reappointment, Public Safety Commission, is that right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, just nod if I'm, if I'm on this, okay. Other questions or thoughts?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would offer a motion to ratify all three appointments.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second also? Thank you, okay, a motion and a second to ratify those three appointments, Dave Valencia to Public Safety, Budget Committee members Ted Humphries and Jennifer Conley. Any other discussion or thoughts, if not, would all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Hearing none, motion passes, and those people will be notified that they are appointed. Business from the council? Anything? Okay. Future agenda items for Monday, March 21st, a quarterly pool update from the YMCA, a street maintenance bid award, a moose lodge lease renewal, and a watered update. Anything else that should be on next meeting's agenda? If not, we're adjourned.